This conference will now be recorded.
A call to meeting order for the Wilmer City Council for Monday, March 1st. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
Aske.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Councilmember Plowman, I know you have one item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to add public comment in between items eight and nine, please.
Okay. Councilmember Fagerly.
I'd like to have a discussion on the lost program and the administrator position.
So I'll put those between items number thirteen and fourteen, so the local option sales tax will be item number fourteen, and the city administrator discussion will be item number fourteen. Fifteen, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then we'll go to community pride announcements, which will be item number sixteen.
All right.
And I know Mr. O'Brien had called me earlier. He would like to make some comments about the Wilmer Municipal Utilities, and that will be at the conclusion of items seven and eight. Is there anybody else that wishes to have anything added or changed from the agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Fagerly, seconded by Councilmember Plowman, to approve the agenda. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Aske.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have recognition of retirement of David Carlson, a public works operator for the city of Wilmer for over forty years. Mr. Manzer.
I'd just like to take this time to thank David Carlson. He hit a milestone of forty years in seventeen days as of Friday, the twenty-sixth was his last day. And I'd like to say that Dave is, you know, people get a lot of nicknames, but Dave is a guy that probably had his share of nicknames, but some names that he didn't know he had was he's consistent, he is honest, he's kind, he's dependable. He had integrity like no other, and he is really going to be missed by us out there. And he has got a wealth of knowledge that you can't even begin to pick out of that brain of his. But he showed me a lot of tricks over the years, and we've had a lot of laughs, and I really have enjoyed being on a team with Dave, and I've enjoyed being a supervisor for him for a few years. And I know that past supervisors would speak the same of Dave. He's a wonderful person, him and his wife both, but I'll let Dave just take a few minutes to say something if he wants. But it's a lot of weekends, holidays, a lot of snowstorms. I kind of penciled out, if we get fifteen snowstorms a year, that's probably six hundred snowstorms he's dealt with, and wind and rain and whatever else, but thank you.
Dave, would you like to make some comments?
Well, I just want to say, appreciate having the opportunity to work for the city of Wilmer these past forty years. It's been great. I've enjoyed working there and with my fellow employees. I know I'm going to miss the place, so thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Dave, I want to thank you from the mayor's office as well for your forty-plus years. You know, Class of seventy-four was a pretty good year in Wilmer, as I recall. So I remember when I started working for the city in two thousand, you were one of the first people that greeted me when we had the welcoming. I believe at that time it was caramel rolls, if I remember correctly.
Right, yeah.
And it was upstairs at the city auditorium, and you were one of the first guys to come up to me and welcome me to Wilmer. And I remember at that time, you told me that the city of Wilmer will treat you as good as you treat the city of Wilmer. And so thank you for your dedication, and Lori, thank you for giving your husband up. Snowstorms, missed birthday parties, Christmases, holidays, because he was always there. So the knowledge that we're losing, when we lose a long-term employee, is something that is always missed. So thank you for your years of service. Thank you for your dedication to this community. But most importantly, now you get to go and love on your wife and your grandkids, so that's a great thing. So any of the council members wish to make any comments? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, for working for the city. I know I would see you on the street every once in a while, and I'd drive by. You're a good worker and.
Thank you.
Enjoyed having you.
Just want to say thank you to members of the council, and thank you, Marv. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you. Now, you can stick around for our entire meeting. We should be out of here by eleven o'clock. I think Brian tells us that we have to be done by eleven, so if you want to stick around, you can. But we understand that if you want to go watch paint dry, that's probably just as exciting for you. So thanks again for your years of service, and Lori, thanks for coming along. I do appreciate that, so. Next, we have consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of February sixteenth, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of February twenty-second, planning commission minutes of February tenth, accounts payable report of February eleventh through the twenty-fourth, public works safety minutes of February eighteenth, and the approval of purchase of skid loader for the public works in the amount of seventy-five thousand, seven hundred, eighty-six dollars from Farmright of Wilmer. Approved purchase of Kubota for wastewater in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred, fourteen dollars, sixty-eight cents from Haug Kubota. Approved cooperative construction agreement with MINDOT for trunk highway twelve utility adjustments. Finance committee minutes of February eighteenth. Call for public hearing on the issuance of conduit revenue bonds to be held April fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Approved the Civic Center Arena special event by on-sale liquor license holder permit. For council's acceptance, the Wilmer Area Convention and Visitors Bureau minutes of January nineteenth. And for council's information, the Main Street Board minutes of February twenty-third.
Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fagerly, seconded by Osmus to approve the consent items. Councilmember O'Brien, would you like to make some comments about the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission?
Yes, thank you. There was a couple of questions that were asked that didn't get into the minutes, and I thought a couple of them were very interesting, and I thought maybe you guys would like to hear it. And one of the questions was asked is, are wind turbines, they had a real issue with their wind turbines down there, and have we ever had those types of issues with our turbines? And the answer was no. And he says because we were set at twenty-five below zero on those turbines. But I also found out so was Texas, but the difference was, was the freezing rain. And we've had issues before with freezing rain, and that will shut these turbines down. And that's what happened in Texas, was all the freezing rain, not so much the cold. And the other issue that I thought was very interesting, right now, we're in what's called a peacetime legislation, and all of the late fees that the municipal utilities would issue were all basically null and void. They were over three hundred thousand dollars were not, basically, the people didn't have to pay them, which was amazing. And that's under this peacetime legislation and the zip we're going through right now. And he also asked, third question was, have we ever had a rolling blackout? And the answer was, the closest we came was three years ago, if you remember that real cold weather. We came about within two to three weeks of an actual rolling blackout ourselves, like they had down in Texas. So I thought those three issues were kind of interesting. I just wanted to pass them on.
Thank you. Anybody, any other discussion on the motion as it has been presented? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Aske.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman, public comment.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I would just request or make a motion to entertain a public comment from Mr. Steve Peppin.
Mr. Peppin? Ms. Thompson, do you have a timer for us? And again, we haven't done this for some time, so just remind everybody of what the rules are. You have three minutes, and at the time of three minutes is up, the clerk will let us know that that three-minute time is up. And then we just ask you to complete the sentence you're on or the thought that you were on, and then please pause, and that would be your time.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Calvin and the Wilmer City Council. My name is Steve Peppin. I reside at twenty-five hundred and fifteen Street Southwest in Wilmer. I'm here on behalf of several business owners, leaders throughout our community, as well as the citizens of Wilmer, to share some perspective. We've had several meetings and conversations of the upcoming vacant city administrator job. First of all, we want to thank our current city administrator, Brian Grammets, for his contributions to our great city. Moving forward, the people I'm representing, and I, believe it's very important that the new city administrator should be someone currently from Wilmer. We hope speaking up will encourage local citizens to apply for this position. We have a few questions for the mayor and council. The city council has decided to move forward with using a recruiter for the position of city administrator. How will the council know if any candidates from Wilmer apply for the position? How will the recruiting company rate the candidates? Will all candidates be brought to the city council or filtered out? And if so, what are the criteria? What value do each, and lastly, what value do each of you put in hiring a local candidate? We feel it's vital to the future of the city to hire one of its own. Hiring for this position outside of our community simply hasn't worked. That isn't a shot at any past administrators. It simply hasn't worked for a variety of reasons. We should turn to someone willing to commit to the position for the long haul. There are strong leaders in our community that may not have every qualification to be the city administrator, but bring strong community ties and relationships to the table. It takes time to build these ties and relationships. With that said, in our opinion, everyone don't need to have the perfect college degree resume to be the city administrator. There are plenty of great leaders in our community that may not look perfect on paper, but they are great leaders, community-minded, understand how the city works, and are great team players. We respectively urge the mayor and city council to focus on hiring someone from our community. We also urge the citizens of Wilmer that feel they could be great city administrators to get involved by applying for the position. Have the courage to throw your name in the hat, believe in yourself, step up. The future of our great city depends on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Grammets has recorded your questions, and Mr. Grammets will be getting back to you with the answers that you have asked, so, as appropriate. Thank you. Next, we have approved amending appointments to Intergovernmental Planning and Communications Committee. Mr. Grammets. Item number nine.
Is that on? Yeah. I really do want to apologize. This is an extension from the January eleventh meeting, and after a bit of confusion, in particular on the Intergovernmental Planning and Communications Committee, membership of that, as I think I've explained, you know, in prior emails to everyone on the city council, kind of a thing, is that it's set up so that the mayor, the city administrator, the county administrator, the county board chair, the school superintendent, and the school board chair are on that committee. It totally blew past me. I kind of forgot that that's how that committee was set up. We selected amongst ourselves on the city council. I tried to make an adjustment, and finally, the fog cleared. And what I want to do is propose that the current membership be approved by the city council, because that's really how it was supposed to have been on January eleventh, when we reorganized. So I apologize. That was my mistake, that I didn't identify that back then. So this is an attempt to try and clarify it, set the record straight, so that the membership on that committee is what it originally had been planned to be, and has been for the last, how many years, that this organization's been operating? So again, I would encourage you to adopt the resolution setting forth those members on that committee, so the world will still be spinning in the right direction and tilted at the right angle.
Is there approval for this recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Was made by Plowman, seconded by Osmus to approve amending the appointments to Intergovernmental Planning Communications Committee. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Aske.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion is approved. City Minister Grammets, thank you for bringing that issue back up, and we all have days when we have that brain fog, so you weren't the only one, so, but thank you for taking responsibility and making it right. Thank you. Next, we have approved directing staff to initiate the recruiting process for human resources director. Mr. Grammets.
The recommendation, I think, from staff is simply that, to recognize that the city administrator has received the resignation of Samantha Beckman, human resource director. It'll be approximately three more weeks before she leaves the employment with the city of Wilmer, and she'll be moving on to a job in the region here, so she's not leaving the area. Her family will continue to live in the area, and so we do wish her well on her next employment opportunity. But that does create a vacancy within the city directorship for human resource. Obviously, we've got a lot of positions that we're currently working on and potentially be looking at in the future. And so we will sorely miss a human resource director, you know, at this time, as well as probably through the months of June, July, and August. So we have different opportunities that we can focus on. We could try to find a skilled human resource individual that might be between jobs, that would be looking for an interim position, knowing full well that they may not, you know, stay here, but they'll get us to the point where we can fill the position. Second, we could utilize HR firms that would have temporary services, or we could contract with them to provide the services that we need. There are about five or six firms out there that actually do this. We could, again, much like Baker Tilly, we could contract with a firm to, you know, search for an individual. Or we just shut everything down where we're currently at, continue on, finish the ones that are currently underway, do what we can internally, because we do have a part-time HR staff person that does work, you know, for the city and does know the application process, and does know, you know, the inner workings of the software, so that we, I mean, we have part-time people coming on the employment roster for spring. I mean, you know, we're going to have our normal turnover and bringing on of employees due to summer activities, whether they're coaches, or umpires, or lifeguards. So we have a need to fill this position. And I put the, I put the motion on there more as a placeholder to, you know, so we can have a discussion. If you want to authorize me to fill it temporarily, I can do that. I just don't, I've only had five, six days to kind of go through this and try and find firms. I've worked with the League of Minnesota Cities to get names of companies that could assist us. I've also got interim people that the League of Minnesota Cities provided to me, so that we can, we can look at those potentially. But I really don't have, you know, a defined direction that I can give you. It just hasn't been here long enough for me to make a recommendation. So we could do one of two ways, you know. You can instruct staff to bring back or go through the process, advertise, you know. Internally, we've even talked about, well, is this an opportunity to look at our organization? And maybe have an assistant city administrator slash HR person. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do, and I'm open to anything you want to consider. My perspective is, we start looking at redoing job descriptions and running them through city council meetings, and it takes, you know, every two weeks, the council meets, and it's going to take a while to redo the job descriptions. If we do anything other than what we currently have, it's going to be at least, you know, like a month and a half before we get the job descriptions approved, and we can move forward on a new position. And I'm just telling you that if you leave everything the way it is and you feel it, we probably can move right ahead. If you want to start combining, that just delays the filling of that position. And, you know, it could be August, September, before, you know, we get through the whole process. I'm willing to do whatever the council, you know, directs me to do, and so that's why I'm just saying, here's the spectrum. I'm open to whatever you would like us to do, and so I'm interested in your thoughts on how we move forward on filling this position.
As Chair of the Labor Committee, Councilmember Davis, do you have any opinions?
Well, I definitely think we should combine the assistant city administrator with the HR director. I mean, even if it takes a little time to rewrite the job description, I think that would save us some money in the end. As far as, you know, finding someone to be our interim human resources director, I guess I'm, and I, you know, I mean, we could go through one of the local companies, like Mr. Butterfield was suggesting, for the administrator. Otherwise, I'm fine with the league, too. I guess I feel like Mr. Grammets knows what he's doing, and I trust what choice he makes.
Additional comments from anybody? Councilmember Butterfield.
I would like to see our local staffing companies get involved on this. You know, there are taxpayers of this community. They can research, they can search for qualified candidates, just not in Wilmer, just not in Candyway County. They can go nationally, regionally, statewide. They can do it all. And this would be a good foot in the door. And that way, when we need some help, we have probably, there's four or five different companies right here in Wilmer that could help out. You know, there's many businesses here in Wilmer that use staffing companies, and it could definitely help us out.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I think we need to do something temporary, but there are companies, not necessarily just staffing companies. I think there are companies that provide HR services to businesses that can't afford to hire their own HR. And so they're independent ones, and there are one through CBAs. And so I think we have a sense that we need to have someone in that position, or someone that can help us. And so I would hope that we would look at doing something temporary. And I also would hope that we would look at the job description and how it relates to other job descriptions in administration. And if there is an opportunity to look at combining positions or combining work efforts, those types of things, I think we're a large enough organization. We need a human resource presence. But that perhaps could be filled by an assistant administrator and look at creating efficiencies for all administration in how we operate. So I would hope that we will look for something, that we would authorize Mr. Grammets to look for something temporary to do that, whether it's through just the best person that can help us in the position that we're in right now, so.
Additional comments? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we should hire a full-time until we have a full-time administrator, so we can reorganize. The person that we have part-time now, are they capable? Would they be willing to fill it until we do something permanently?
I have not had opportunity to discuss. The person that we, that's been working has been like a part-time clerical support person, and I, to be quite honest, haven't even looked at, you know, that person's resume to even know how much farther, you know, we can use that individual to support, you know, HR. I know that they're aware of the software and the processes and things of that nature. So if I were to say, I need to advertise, this person would be able to advertise and receive the applications through the software process. But it's at that point that it falls apart, then you don't have the analysis of the applicants. And the other thing that, it's the day-to-day stuff, I think, that is, you know, we get, we get information on a weekly basis from the governor on, you know, employment law due to COVID and changes in the whole process as we're going through this, you know, COVID, you know, situation that we find ourselves in. And I just sit back and go, yeah, we got somebody administratively to do the, what I call the logistics of the process at a lower level, but we, you know, we need somebody on the upper level to handle all of those other things that happen. I mean, just, you know, yes, not yesterday, because that was not at work, David. This morning, I asked the department heads to start preparing numbers so that we can analyze some of the impacts of upcoming adjustments for 2022. And much of that information is coming from the HR person, which isn't something that would typically come from the support staff. And so while it's good to have this person, I don't know that we can just say, oh, well, you know, we got six months. I don't think we have, we can't leave that space open that long. I think we do need somebody interim to, you know, kind of keep the ship tight, and that with the help of the current staff, they can do that. But we do need them to fill it long-term, you know, with whatever system, you know, you're interested in formulating, whether it's a joint positions, or you just say, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to go full-fledged, you know, HR again. I know we've had discussions about how the organization's set up. Is the position, you know, like a director position, or should it be more under administration? I've seen it more under administration than as a separate director. But I guess if we're going to take the time to look at how we can combine positions and maybe make something that's better in the long run, that we may also want to look at, how does that really fit in the organization? So that it makes sense. Not that this doesn't make sense now. It's just that, could it flow better? Could it flow easier? You know, these are all things that you could talk about if we take our time, you know, and worry, you know, worry about filling this position, you know, six months from now, but do an interim just to keep everything going.
Councilmember Plowman, followed by O'Brien, followed by Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am also in favor of taking a more in-depth look at the position and what efficiencies may be available by combining positions and finding the best person for the job, and also maybe what future jobs may entail, because we are a growing, evolving mechanism as a community. I know that our current HR director, Beckman, played an integral role in setting the city up on. the city up on, um, human capital management, uh, software such as like Cronos and, and other systems like that. Um, are those common enough systems that it's realistic or reasonable to think that we could find somebody in the interim that would know those systems well enough that we could, that we could get something put in place right away while labor begins the process of, uh, assembling this thing the correct, the correct way? Is it too specialized or is that something pretty widely used?
I think the, the Cronos software is, is, uh, wide, wider than city use. There are other organizations that use it very successfully and the implementation on the city side, I will say, has not gone without its bumps, you know, in the road. But anybody we get in should be able to, uh, access the training that Cronos provides and also because we have somebody on staff that can help explain how everything works, you know, uh, knows the inner workings of the, of the Cronos as it sits for HR. Uh, I think the combination of both of those, anybody that we bring in would be like anything else. It's a, it's a really steep learning curve, but, you know, uh, that's what's expected when, you know, you, you come in and say, I, I'll be in interim and because I have all this experience? Okay, now apply that to this Cronos system. Uh, I, I, you know, uh, the only, the, the negative that I see so far on the Cronos system is that it's not, uh, necessarily designed for the complexities of a city's payroll system. You know, if, if I worked, now, let's say as an employee in a firm and I had one account that my wages went to and I didn't, and all I had was overtime and comp time and sick leave and vacation, that's really simple. But when you go to the police department or the public works and they've got comp time banked, they use comp time, they add comp time, they get, took vacation, now they've got, um, uh, like in a police department, you might have, uh, increased pay because of a night shift or you're, you know, let's say you're the canine handler, so you get an extra, you know, $10 a month. All of these little slivers of information have to go into the payroll system. Cronos wasn't set up for that. They, they keep having to add things. So the simpler the organization, Cronos is easier to understand. Our payroll system, mu- much like every other city, has all of these little unique things which Cronos never anticipates. So they've had to rebuild it. So I just want to go on record as saying, is it something somebody can learn? Yes. Is it more com- is it more unusual in a city? The answer is yes, very much so. Is it used by other, uh, businesses? The answer is yes. So I think it's something that can be learned.
Councilmember Palman?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on that then. Um, just kind of wondering if we've worked ourselves into a, a position such that if we switch HR directors or switch, you know, however we end up doing it, um, is that piece of software, is that, is that something that is now an integral part of how the city operates? And are, do we intend to continue doing that? Or with the new HR director, does then come the possibility of switching HR directors, switching s- systems, switching a- all of that stuff? Or, or is it more of, uh, um, something that's already a part of our system so we're going to keep, keep up with? Because I, I know HR Director Beckman was, uh, uh, an advocate of the piece of software and, and incorporating it into the city.
I think if you, I think if we look historically, I think, uh, before she was hired, the city was working on that. And that was one of the things that she brought to the table is that she had worked with it in her previous employer, employment, uh, position. And if we go back, uh, like six years ago, it was something that was a goal of the council to have a different reporting system. So I don't think it necessarily was driven by Ms. Beckman, I think it was driven more by direction of council. And I would view that being similar. If the council chose through the direction of the administrator to go that direction, that's what we would do. But at this point, I think we would, it would be advantageous to the city to look to see if there's somebody that could do that. I mean, that, that's, that's my recollection of what happened. And I know Mr. Holland, when he was our administrator, was a, was a real strong pusher for the Cronos system.
And if I may, thank you. Um, I guess that's kind of the reason for my comment is I'm wondering if we are talking about the replacement of, um, a position or if we're talking about the replacement of a position and a system and all of those things. Because I remember that was a long discussion and we were quite happy with the direction that, uh, Ms. Beckman took things with regards to that. So discussing just a position is one thing, discussing positions and systems and methodologies, that becomes an even bigger animal. So that, that's my question, but I, I got my answers for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Brien, followed by Nelson.
Most of you probably know the answer to this, but, uh, where did we locate our current HR? I mean, was she a, a local person or she, did we locate her by some sort of a search organization like we're talking about? Or where did we, where did we find Ms. Beckman to begin?
Ms. Beckman was hired, uh, through an ad in the West Central Tribune and she responded to that. She was working in the area, not in, she was living in the area and working in the area, not necessarily in Wilmer.
So why can't we run ads paper the same way?
Thank you. Um, I think it would be helpful for the council to also understand, I, I know this comment was made before about, um, what are the relationships between finance and human resources? And did, is the system capable of integrating or as we look at the job description with what we need to do, how does it fit together? And so I think that would be helpful also as we look at what we should be doing next. Um, if we're, if we're changing job descriptions, but what should we expect and how should they work together for the best efficiency for, um, both for human resources and finance? And I'm not sure if the two systems don't talk to each other, but I know there are issues and there are, um, information that has entered twice. And so I just think it would be helpful for us to look at that, if there's a way to create efficiencies on either side.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, Councilmember Butterfield?
I would just like to know if, uh, we could reach out, see if the county HR could sub out, you know, help us out for a while? If that's a possibility?
Yeah, we have, we have some, uh, you know, we have, we have Caris Health who used to be a-
No, the Candyway County Human Resources.
Right, right. Yeah, so when we looked at this before, we looked at Caris Health, which was Rice at the time. So we looked at sharing services there. And then we also looked at sharing services with municipal utilities because they are under the city umbrella. Now Caris Health is no longer under the city umbrella, but municipal utility still is. So it's a good suggestion. So what I'm hearing with, what, what we kind of have on the table right now, and we need to give direction to the administrator, um, one is that we bring in an interim city, uh, HR director to, uh, stopgap us through that. The other is we do a combination of using local hiring firms and hiring opportunities. And the other is, uh, uh, we totally look at that job description and see if there's a way we can incorporate that. And so that's what I'm hearing and if I'm missing anything or if there's anybody willing to, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ask.
Thank you. Um, I think I'm just going to echo some comments that I've heard from a lot of my colleagues already and just, I think it's a great opportunity to, to reexamine the, the staff model, uh, as a whole, to find a, a model that's effective and efficient. And I think we should take the time that an interim would give us, whether that's a, one person is, uh, interim director, whether that's a, a firm, as Councilwoman Nelson mentioned. But I, I think that the temporary solution provides an opportunity to examine all of this. And I think furthermore, I, I believe the new city administrator, um, should be able to, to arrive and to provide insights and direction, uh, in, in the way that we would look to reorganize, uh, the staff model and, and to take advantage of the opportunities, um, that there might be crossovers with other departments or, you know, the possibility that the assistant city administrator could also, could also work with HR. Then, then new administrators should be able to, to hire and design their own staff, uh, in the way they desire.
I agree with that. Councilmember Osmond, followed by Nelson.
I guess I would be curious to know if an assistant administrator realistically would do HR functions. Is, is that something that's out there, um, or not?
Mr. Grammets?
Yeah, the, um, combination is not uncommon-
Okay.
-to have the assistant and HR, uh, together, nor is the assistant in economic development uncommon. Uh, the, the assistant is kind of like the, you know, I don't want to say catch-all, but the, the go-to person for special projects and something else to keep them active in the middle of the special projects. Okay? Um, so, uh, every assistant that I guess, uh, I've known where there was just one assistant played a role in HR, uh, whether it's health insurance, you know, following certain segments of it or, or, uh, just overseeing, you know, the operation. So it's not unusual. Uh, the, the bigger you are as a community, the more specialized you become, then therefore you have one person in that job. The smaller community, you have maybe the, the one person doing a couple of things or maybe three things, you know? Uh, so it answers-
I liked the idea, uh, but I thought before we think we're going to go in that direction, I wanted to know if it was even realistic or feasible. Um, because up until, what, three years ago, we didn't have an HR person. Um, and so also creating a new administrative assistant position, I, I, I like, I like the idea, the possibility of combining the two, but I just, I wanted to make sure that we would have a, a market, uh, to pull from.
Councilmember Nelson? I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson?
I, I'm just seeking clarification. I think Mr. Grammets has some great ideas. It sounds like we need to do something quickly. Do we, can we just authorize him to, if there is an interim option or a firm, to do that? And then also for us to take our time to review the job description? So could we, can we do both of that? Do we need, need to provide him with direction? Are you looking for a motion to do that?
I'm looking for a motion on what the council wishes to do, to provide that direction. And the reason I'm looking for that motion is that the council, uh, the administrator needs some clear direction. Um, I think the administrator laid out probably at least five options in his opening comments that we could go any of those directions. And then we added the additional one of advertising locally, using local firms. Um, you know, what I heard in his opening comments was that we really need to have someone here and we can maybe use those other firms to help with that process, but, um, we really need somebody here is what I heard him kind of imploring us to do. I don't know if that, if imploring is the right word, but he was, what I was hearing is we need to do something. So, Councilmember Osmond, I'm trying to get us to consensus.
I know. Okay, um, in, in knowing our timeline and, and what we're going to have to do here, one of the suggestions was to go with the League of Minnesota Cities. And as much as I like the idea of going with a local firm and just getting somebody in that could possibly do some of the HR, um, uh, job, I think if you go with somebody from the league, they know city government and they will know, um, the HR issues that we deal with, um, as a city government, rather than if, you know, we got an interim that came in, had to learn the system maybe, and is coming from private industry.
Yeah, I think, I think the League of Minnesota Cities would give us names, correct?
Yeah, I've got two resources that, that came from the League of Minnesota Cities. One is a list of, um, administrative, whether they be city managers or city administrators or, or city clerks or whomever, that have put their name on a list that if a city needs help, they're willing to consider coming and doing interim work. Uh, kind of like when I first arrived here, you know, uh, well over, you know, a year and a half ago, uh, there's a list of those names.
I think there's something that comes with that seasoning and, and experience.
The second, uh, resource is a list of firms that, uh, contract with cities, uh, much like we contract with the, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities for, uh, or flattery in hood, for, uh, city attorney work. There are firms out there that specialize in accounting and HR and those type of activities and we can contact them. Uh, the, the third option, uh, is, that's a subgroup of the second group, is the search firms that, you know, you say, here's what we want, and then they'll say, okay, fine. Much like our local, uh, uh, job, uh, placement businesses, they'll say, for 10% of the wage or for 15% of the wage, I will find you somebody and, uh, provide you names and then you, you make your selection. So you've got a local group, you've got more of a, you know, there's a national group or regional, you know, Midwest group. And you, you, you may even have, uh, I saw one firm that I remember seeing the name of, it's more like a Minneapolis firm, uh, that, that does contract this, this work out. So we have resources, it's just how do you want to fill that interim versus how do you want to fill the long-term one? And I, I sense the long-term one, we, we can look at our options, you know, look at job descriptions, look at how we can reorganize. So really the, the crux of the matter is how do we fill that short-term, six-month kind of, uh, opening, uh, before we bring in the, the, the person that we want to fill the, uh, our, our position? So that's, I think, uh, what I guess I'd put on the table. We have a short-term goal and we got a long-term goal. The short-term one is the most immediate one. That's the one, you know, how do you want me to go about that? Um, and I make any contact you, you want. If you want to go local, I can, you know, I'll go local. Uh, if you want me to peruse the list of names to see if there's anybody that fits that, that would be interested in coming out here, that then doesn't come with a finder's fee. That's just, we call them up and say, would you be interested in coming out here and talking with us about it? And if you're a good fit, we'll come to some financial agreement.
Councilmember Nelson?
I, I wanted to make a motion to allow Mr. Grammets to move forward with his, what he described as his short-term goal, but looking at the best option, whether that, so that we aren't just confining him to one type, to look local or look at a local firm or look at the resources that he's already started to collect from the league. So I would make that as a motion.
Second.
This motion's been made to, uh, allow the administrator to bring back recommendations to the council, then seconded by Councilmember Fagerly. Additional discussion to the motion. Councilmember Butterfield?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to add a friendly amendment on that to make sure we do get all the local staffing companies that want a shot at this, for him to reach out and see if they're interested in, in helping us out for the short term, also on that.
I, I, um, I wasn't excluding it to, um, staffing companies, because I know there are HR companies here that provide that too. So I, I was giving him the latitude to look at what's best, uh, or what's most available as, as quick as he can, so.
Okay with that?
Yeah, I'd like to see some local staffing companies involved.
Additional conversations. We'll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmond?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next we have an approval-
Mayor Kelvin?
Councilmember Nelson?
Do we need to, um, start anything else or will we get that automatically to look at job descriptions, those kinds of things?
I think that's a two-step process. I think that should come back at a later time, it should go through, uh, to keep our committees-
Okay, thank you.
I, I would anticipate that we'd work through the Labor Committee and go through it like we would any other, uh, job.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Next we have approved professional services agreements with Bolton and Mink for Epitopics Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Project, Mr. Christensen, our Public Works Director. And at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to, um, um, Mayor Protem, Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Sean, you're going to present this? Mr. Christensen?
I sure can, Mr. Mayor Protem.
All right, thank you.
The council in front of you tonight is, uh, two resolution proposals, uh, one for water main design and construction services, one for sanitary sewer main, uh, design- main design and construction services, one for sanitary sewer main design and construction services. The car form in front of you, page 214 of 250, includes both. If you'll notice, there's two resolutions on there, just to kind of try to keep things straight here. And with your permission, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to do the second one first, the sanitary sewer one first.
That's fine.
I believe it's a little easier, easier to explain and easier to move through. So in front of you is a resolution entered into agreement with Bolton and Mink, or proposal for resolution, rather, professional services. This is related to the Epitopics project that we've called it over the last year or so. And this is for sanitary sewer design and construction services. Total amount, $189,590. The total construction estimate is just shy of $1.3 million. And then at the bottom of the page there, we broke down the contingencies, design and construction engineering services, as well as grant funds of the $1.3 million, which, as you can see, will largely pay for that portion of the project, leaving a total out of pocket that would come from wastewater in the amount of, again, estimated $294,290.
I'd enter that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And what were the figures again? I don't see it here on mine.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protem, there at the bottom right of that car form, page 214 of your packet, so it's, construction is just shy of $1.3 million. Engineering services, of course, shy of $200,000, $189,000. And then it's got the grant funds of $1.3 million subtracted off of that total, or a total out of pocket potentially of just shy of $300,000.
All right. Any questions from any council members?
Not so much a question, just a recommendation and appreciation for those, I believe the EDC was involved, in helping obtain this, obtain these grant funds for this. And so I think that should be, that should be recognized, and I think that's a good reason to take this item first, is because it's a good project that will help, you know, with the Highway 12, excuse me, realignment and bringing utilities out that direction. So, thank you.
I see the county and city economic director is with us. Mr. Backman, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you for considering this. I have talked with Epitopics today, for example, and they continue to be committed for this. They've actually expanded the project more than I anticipated. This is a $15 million expansion that they are planning for this community, representing a long-term commitment to investing in Wilmer, with adding well-paying biotech jobs here. They're looking at tripling the size of their production facility on the west side of town. And that, of course, is going to require both water and sanitary sewer. So thank you for considering this. They, in fact, just in January, they acquired another 6.7 acres to the north with the intent of clearing that site and expanding. So they're very serious about this.
Good, it should be an excellent project then. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Can we have roll call then?
Councilmember Ossk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Ossmas?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, that's approved. Mr. Mayor, you want to take it over again?
Thank you for standing in for me there. Next, we have the second item, Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Secondly, on that same car form, same page 214 of your packet, is the, very similarly, waterline design and construction services to serve the same area of town, the new annexation. It will include, obviously, the Epitopics business and building and expansion out there. So this resolution would enter into an agreement with Bolton and Mink, with professional services, and this amount is $111,760. This one, we added a contingent from the committee, added a contingency upon approval of the project itself. And the reason for that is, there are no grant funds set aside at this point, at this time, for this project. And so this construction of $790,000 on that same form there, with the contingencies and with the two design and construction services, the total of just under $1 million at this time, has no large funding source for this particular project. So what I was asking to do, what I asked the committee to recommend was, present this, approve hiring Bolton and Mink to do the services contingent on council approval of the project, which would, at that time, come up with a funding source.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made by Plowman, seconded by Ossmas, to approve the agreement. Councilmember Nelson.
Just seeking clarification with why you want this approved now versus not waiting until the project itself is approved.
You know, thank you, Ms. Nelson. We can do either way. I just thought it made some sense to have all the design services approved at the same time. Obviously, if we don't act on it, it doesn't, there's no, there's no charge to the city. But just the fact that there was, we're already doing the wastewater, kind of made sense to do the water at the same time. Not necessary by any means.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Director, Christensen, is there a time deadline? How long is Bolton and Mink's proposed contract good for? So what kind of latitude do we have in terms of decision-making? Is there a certain timeline that we have to approve the go-ahead by, before we need to rebid that through Bolton and Mink?
You know, Councilmember Plowman, I haven't had that conversation with Bolton and Mink. I sure can. In most cases, if, you know, engineering firms will hold them 90 days or a few months anyway, but I would say, just to be fair to all involved, if it gets much beyond that, we should probably ask them to revamp their, at least their, if not the scope, at least their price proposal.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of the other things we need to remember on this is that when the grant application was made, it was made for water and sewer. And then, I guess this is more for the newer council members that maybe not have been following at the time, but the grant was made for the water and the sewer. And Deed came back to us and said, we'll give you more money if you just, we'll pay for 100% of the sewer, which is more money than the grant originally was for, but we want you to take the sewer out and fund that on your own. So that's one thing we need to remember, is that, you know, we did get the grant that we applied for. They revised it, Deed revised it for us, increased the dollar amount that they gave us, but then took out the water. So they are kind of a tied project. And I remember working on this back when I was fire chief, of them wanting water out there back then. I mean, I left the city in 2012, so I mean, this issue's been out there for a long time. And so they need the water, yes, but they need the sewer. But one of the stipulations was, you had to have sewer and water in order to be annexed in, which then led to that whole discussion too. So just want to remind the council of that, of those conversations that happened. Mr. Backman wanted to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I might add also, I continue to have ongoing discussions with management with Epitopics. I do think there's a possibility we will get some clarification on their contributions to this project, that is, to the water main project, in the next 60 days, 60, 90 days, because they have to put together their budget. Their fiscal year, I believe, begins in July, and March and April, in particular, are when they're crafting their budget. They've already previously indicated that they would be supportive of providing $530,000 contribution to the water side of this project. And what I'm trying to do is talk them into a higher contribution. So we will see where we end up.
Councilmember Nelson.
So just seeking clarification, we had this conversation at Public Works about not wanting to hold this project back, but I'm just concerned with the motion that we have isn't giving authorization until there is approval by the city council. So are we okay with this resolution? Does it help us to move faster? Or did we not accomplish what we were trying to do with how it's worded?
Mr. Christensen has.
Mr. Christensen.
You know, based on the conversation tonight, if Mr. Backman is going to potentially have more information in the next, let's say, 60 to 90 days, I don't know why, it wouldn't be too big of a stretch to say, let's table this portion, this resolution, until we have that, that information and that project, and we can go forward with all of it at that time. That way, it doesn't have to go through committee again if we're not changing anything, if you just want to table it at council level. That's your call, of course, but I was trying to, I was trying to make things smoother and quicker, but it may not have accomplished that.
Additional comments? Councilmember Plowman followed by Nelson.
I'd like to maybe ask the opinion of Mr. Backman. It was mentioned by the mayor that, that these projects are associated, and we do understand that they are associated. Does Mr. Backman foresee any potential problems with holding up on the water main portion? Is that going to be viewed as a step backwards? Or will it be understood by Epitopics exactly what we're trying to accomplish here, that we're not trying to get rid of the project, rather, we are just trying to tie up all the financial ends?
Mr. Mayor, yes, councilmember. I would say that it's important to give a good message to Epitopics that we're still supportive. I think they would understand if we are gathering more information. On the other hand, you still will have another bite of the apple, so to speak, in terms of whether you approve this project or not. But I think it would send a message to them that both aspects are being seriously considered by the city of Wilmer. In fact, today, when I received an email from Mitch Schuler, he indicated that he recognizes that, on the water side of things, that he needs it for sprinkler system, for fire suppression, and he needs it for processed water. So both are important.
If I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, then I would, I, just myself, my personal position, I would like to stand in support of the motion and keeping the projects tied together. And we will be discussing this in the near future, and I think it's important that we, that we keep them together, even if we can act faster on one facet of it than the other. At least now they're not becoming disjointed, running the risk of sending the wrong message.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I'm fine with supporting that also. I think, just so long as we're aware that currently there isn't funds to pay for those engineering costs, but that would be part of the equation regarding the water that would be brought back to us, correct?
Mr. Christensen? Mr. Christensen states that he will be bringing back a recommendation on funding.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Additional comments? So moving forward with the resolution, roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Ossmas?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Ossk?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a resolution to approve professional services agreement with Bolton and Mink related to Highway 12 lift station elimination. Mr. Christensen, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is, seems like a broken record. It is not. These are three different projects, so I happen to pile them all together. This one is wastewater realm as well. This one actually would eliminate the Highway 12 lift station. We've talked about it for a number of years. It's been in the CIP for a number of years. Actually, it was the first time, it was in the 2019 CIP with a design estimate of $100,000. So rolling that forward to this year, the Highway 12 lift station, just a little bit of background, is over 50 years old. It's at maximum capacity, and I thought I had the number in here, but it's cycling over 100 times a day. It's cycling way too many times a day, and we're going to run the risk of losing those pumps very quickly if we don't do something before too long. We've also, the fact that that's at capacity, we've actually had to put the hole on a few developments that would access that lift station in the area, because there is no more capacity at that particular lift station. This project would eliminate lift station, make it a gravity sewer directly to the Western Interceptor, which I think is a great design. Not only do you get rid of the lift station, but you get rid of all the perpetual maintenance on the lift station itself. Under budgetary and fiscal issues on your, on your form, page 234 of your packet, I realize I've left off one vital piece of information, and that's the engineering fees on that particular agreement that you're, that I'm recommending approval. So the engineering fees, as approved, or as indicated later in your packet, is $130,525. And that goes, would go along with the estimated design of $100,000 in 2019, and estimated construction of $700,000 that was in this year's CIP for a total of $800,000. And that would be the, the construction and engineering costs for that particular project. Mr. Mayor.
I don't know who said that, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was turning it back over to you.
Miss, Councilmember O'Brien. Councilmember Ossmas.
I just have a question on the $133,000. Is that included with the $800,000 or addition to? Just to make sure.
I believe what he said is that was inclusive of the $800,000.
Got it.
I'm looking for a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Plowman, seconded by Ossmas, to approve a professional services agreement with Bolton and Mink related to Highway 12 lift station elimination in the amount not to exceed $800,000. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Ossmas?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Ossk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is an authorization of intergovernmental transfer and ECPN payments arrangement between Caris Health, Rice Memorial Hospital, Caris Health, I mean, Rice Care Center, and the city. Mr. Olkins, our finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Included in your packet on electronic page 244 is a copy of the executive summary talking about the intergovernmental payment transfer agreement with Caris Health. There are two parts to the agreement. Basically, the first part is the annual contribution addressed in the lease of Section 3.1. The second part is an annual ECPN reimbursement pass-through from the city to Caris Health or Rice Care Center. That is the action that the finance committee took and is making a recommendation to the full council that it be approved on page, electronic page 248 of the agreement. The two changes to the agreement are item number five, which increases the monthly amount from $5,900 to approximately $11,033 per month. And the second change is to extend the agreement through the year 2021. And the committee made the recommendation to approve the changes as stated.
Mayor Kelvin, I would make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement for the intergovernmental transfer and ECPN payments by and between Caris Health, Rice Hospital, Rice Care Center, and City Wilmer.
Second.
Which was made by Nelson, seconded by Fagerly, to approve and have the mayor and administrator sign on behalf of the city. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Ossmos.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have an item that was added by Councilmember Fagerly to talk about the local option sales tax projects. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In reading in the newspaper and talking to people, I think we got some issues with some of the projects out at the Civic Center. Personally, I think we need to put them on hold. We need to communicate better with the school. Now I see the Curling Club has some issues. We have to talk with them. One thing I prefer to do is complete Swanson Field and Robins Island, but the rest, we need to just halt for the time being until find out where exactly we are.
Okay. Would you like to make that as a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Fagerly, seconded by Councilmember Butterfield. So let me paraphrase and make sure I heard what you said correctly. You want to complete Robins Island and Swanson Field and put the remaining projects for the local option sales tax on hold.
That's correct.
Okay. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question with regards to the intent of the motion. Would that be indefinite hold? Or is there a threshold at which the subject will be brought up again, or until what time? Or is it just hold until it's brought back to the council? And if so, sorry. If so, who is responsible for bringing it? Where?
Well, I would say until we get an agreement with the school, because I've heard that they aren't on board with transferring some of the land. Lake Marley, we just found out, a consultant knew, but we just found out, or I just found out, it's not large enough for the wastewater. It needs to be enlarged or dug deeper. I mean, that should have been brought to us early in the process. So, and now the Curling Club, they're upset because of the location of the Event Center isn't where they thought it was going to be. It's going to affect the Curling Club. And the Event Center, it's not an Event Center, it's two gyms. We don't need two gyms. If we needed more gyms, we should add on to a school. But that was defeated by the general public a few years ago. So...
If I may follow up?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm not sending in objection to the motion. These were items that were discussed at Public Works. We were brought presentations, given presentations, and we overheard the presentations. And the items that you are mentioning were items of concern to the committee. And for that reason, those items were tabled because we felt it best that there were answers that needed to be given, there was research that needed to be done, there was numbers, there were a lot of things that was just not, we weren't comfortable with making the recommendation that the council, because it wasn't where it needed to be. I guess my question just revolves more than, or more so, what will be the process moving forward? Because the message that the community got is, we don't know what we're doing. This is tabled. We don't know where we're going, and there might be some frustrations there, or some confusion about where it's going to go. And so that's all my question is getting at, is are we going to identify, if we pass this motion, are we going to identify a process or a procedure in which we will use? Are we going to direct the local option sales tax board to take action? Are we going to go back to the subcommittee level? Just exactly how are we going to handle it? Or are we just going to table it for now and handle it later? That's the...
I would say the Invest in Wilmer Board will still be a board, but we need to make sure our finances are coming through on a regular basis, because we're pretty short each month. So until we get stable on that, there's no need to proceed. I guess Invest in Wilmer Board, if they think it's time to resume, then they'll have to tell us, and then we'll look at it again. But we need to finish Robins Island and Swanson Field, because they're almost complete with their design. But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to go to our city attorney, followed by our city administrator, followed by Councilmember Ossmos, followed by Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Nelson, did you raise your hand?
Not yet.
Okay.[978.56][978.56](Laughter) So I can anticipate your hand going up.
Probably.
All right. Good, good. I didn't have your name here, and I'm going, where's Councilmember Nelson? So I'll start with our legal counsel, and Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Briefly, I do have some information for your consideration that's relevant to the motion, although I recognize, I believe the motion was made for broader reasons than this. But as far as the recreation fields project, which is the athletic fields adjacent to the school property, which is on school property that needs to be transferred to the city to facilitate that project, I am in contact with the attorney for the school district, and we are targeting having agreements ready for the land transfer for the Public Works Committee this Thursday, I understand. We've been going back and forth. I think we have it basically agreed to. There is no objection by the school district to providing the land. What there is, is we're still trying to sort through exactly what the cities, what form the cities' rights will be to access the school parking lot, to be able to have users of the facility park in the school parking lot, as well as use the school driveway. We've requested that be an easement, and the proposal right now is that the rights be conferred instead in a use agreement that would also address the school's ability to use the fields before, I think at 6:00 PM on school days. So the bottom line is, I think those negotiations have proceeded, we're very, very close. And I think both myself and the school district's attorney are planning, I'm speaking tomorrow, to try and get the agreements in final shape for the committee consideration, that is, if the council does not stay them tonight. But I just wanted the council to be aware of the status of those talks and my efforts with the attorney for the school district to resolve the issues.
Thank you. City Minister Grammets, followed by Councilmember Ossmos, followed by Councilmember Davis.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, as Councilman Plowman has alluded to, these items were tabled at the committee level and are really not put forth for any approvals at the council level at this point in time. We will be addressing those coming up. As the city attorney has noted, the agreement, I think, is okay in concept with the school. We've got it on paper. Their grounds committee, I believe, is going to meet this week to review the same contract that Mr. Scott was referring to. If acceptable, then they would be recommending to their school board next Monday or Tuesday, whenever they meet. So there, moving forward, I think we've come to terms on how we need to address the land transfer. So I agree with Mr. Scott. That's probably not something that we necessarily want, you know, to hold up. It's within what we think it should be. The stormwater issue that was brought up, we're not going to address Lake Marley. It wasn't talk about moving the stormwater pond to the opposite side of the entry road to the high school. And that's been, I guess, thrown away, per se. And we're going to keep the pond on the Civic Center side of the road, so it's on our property. There's no question, you know. We just need to get the proper permits as required for stormwater. So that really shouldn't be an issue. And it's my understanding that the discussions with Park and Rec Director Baumgart and the Curling Club, that there was some concern about location of their building, that there's misinterpretation, that they resolved that, and that city staff has been working with the Curling Club people about, you know, like where the garbage dumpsters are, how can we shield them from the Curling facility? So I don't know that there's any major issues with the curlers right at this point in time. I mean, these are emails that I've seen today and last Friday and last Thursday. And so emails that I probably had seen a week and a half ago, there was questions, but it seems like through the conversations of showing the plat and showing how it all connects, those have been resolved. So I, you know, I guess I would recommend that we just kick it or leave it back at the Public Works, let them work, bring back their tabled items, make a recommendation for the council at some future council meeting. Because I think there, all of the issues that Councilmember Fagerly has brought up have progressed a good distance since a week ago. And so I don't know that I would get hung up on it, because we're trying to keep it moving forward for a spring bid, if we do go there. And then I want to just finish with the local option sales tax revenue. As my emails, you know, to the city council alerting you to how much revenue is coming in, the Invest in Wilmer group has been notified how much money is coming in, finance has been apprised of the collection so far. And our current rate of receipts would support, right at this point in time, it's fairly consistent, and it's, you know, going up a little bit every month kind of a thing, would support about $21 million in debt. That's what it would help, it would fund. And if you add the $2 million Swanson, $3 million Robins Island, $6 million Field, and $10 million Event Center, that's $21 million. So the revenues do support that. It's anything beyond that, that the current revenues are probably not likely going to support, and that's stormwater and Community Center. So just, you know, to reaffirm that the receipts are adequate for the first four projects that are on the list. If you want to keep going, that's fine. I'm just letting you know that the numbers are what they are, and they will support all four projects at this point in time.
Councilmember...
Any questions? You can, obviously, I'm here to, you know, answer.
Councilmember Ossmos, followed by Councilmember Davis.
Okay. Mr. Grammets did point out several of the points that I was going to make about the runoff was in a different location, the different sessions that I've attended, the presentations. It is on the Civic Center side of the road where the pond would be located. I definitely do not think we should put brakes on the projects. I think the softball fields are ready to go forward. That's all part of the programming for the summer of getting those in place and getting the bids out, and hopefully for the future of having tournaments. I just, I think we need to keep going forward. I do acknowledge and understand that we do have, if you want to call it a philosophical struggle right now, between whether we need two basketball courts and the indoor event center, community, Event Center, or the third sheet of ice. And I also would like to see somehow, some way, that we could finance the third sheet of ice. But I don't want to see brakes put on permanently right now on anything. It's going to committee, they're moving forward.
Councilmember Davis.
Well, I just want to say, as the council liaison for the Event Center, I'm looking at our paper here that was given to the public when, before this went to vote. And the committee tried its hardest to get all of these things for the $10 million that we had. And it was not easy to get what we came up with. And I know there's basketball courts, but that's only because there was indoor tennis and pickleball wanted, and it seemed wise to have basketball on the same court and utilize the space better. So that's why that's there. But I just wanted to stick up for the committee, because they did work real hard, and I just want to explain why it turned out the way it did. So...
Okay. The way I see this is that we have a lot of conflicting information that seems to be going on. You know, at one time, we're hearing we don't have any money. Now, tonight, we're hearing we've got money to do four projects. We're hearing that the $10 million isn't enough to do everything that needs to be done, you know. So it's very confusing to me, as the mayor, to try to get my arms around all of this and try to keep shepherding this all forward when I get all these mixed messages. And, you know, I don't take the time, and I've acknowledged it to most all of you, I don't take the time to sit through all of the, and watch all of the videos that happen, have all the conversations. You know, the mayor does a lot of other things that other council members don't do. And I just, I feel that that's the committee's responsibility. And if something the mayor needs to know, the mayor should be told, or it's going to be in the agenda that I review when I get the agenda. So that's the information that I take. And so, you know, I understand why there's confusion here, on why we're not moving this forward. You know, maybe we need to regroup and look at things differently and say, okay, you know, like Councilmember Davis said, you know, we looked at the question, and we tried to be as close to the question as we can be, but maybe there's problems, and maybe we need to find other funding sources to make some of that happen. So that's my opinion. It's Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I do think that there will come a time that the council has to make some priorities with this. And a couple of the concerns, operational costs, can we afford to do these projects? What will it do to our budget? Is this our top priority? And we're going to put City Hall and Community Center on hold and Stormwater on hold? Mr. Grammets does say we can afford to do this, but if we spend the $21 million, that leaves nothing for Stormwater, or nothing for the Community Center for we don't know how long a time. You know, the state budget's looking differently, so maybe we're not going to have to worry about our LGA and those types of things. But I do think we need to be aware of what the operational costs, and that we should have the right, and I believe Mr. Grammets has asked, even in addition to just the Event Center, with what will it cost for the fields and baseball fields? So I think that we are on track to look at those things. The Stormwater needs to be resolved, and we need Stormwater funds every year for when we do other projects. And to say that there won't be Stormwater available, I have a concern with that, too. But I do think we're in the middle of trying to gain some more information. So I'm not sure that putting it on hold tonight is going to solve anything other than bringing back the same issues in the future. And I don't disagree with the mayor in how do we prioritize these things and what's important to that. But that's a different process than some of the things we're looking at right now. And so I'm hesitant to just say stop tonight, but I do think there are some decisions that this council needs to engage in with that. How we're going to do that, maybe that's the question we should be asking tonight with, how are we going to make those priorities?
Councilmember Ask, followed by Councilmember Plowman.
I certainly share some of Councilmember Fagerly's concerns about the Event Center. I feel like the idea of having two gyms, I'm not sure that that really addresses what some of the big picture goals are. I think there probably needs to be more out there than that. But I'm going to also agree with Councilmember Davis that you have to kind of trust the committee's work. I do think Stormwater is a problem. I think that needs to be a high priority for us. But ultimately, I think, because this is not a matter that's before the council tonight, that we're waiting for this at the committee level, and since I imagine this is an issue that quite a few people in the public care a lot about and might have an opinion on, and if we vote tonight, we do so without really alerting anyone in the public, giving them forewarning that this would be a topic that we'd consider tonight. them forewarning that this would be a topic that we'd consider tonight, was not on the agenda. I'm happy to wait for the committee to gather more information and let the public have the opportunity to give us input before we vote to put anything on hold.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I guess I would echo some of that. I completely and wholly understand Councilmember Fagerly's concerns. Those were concerns of ours at the committee level. They were brought out onto the table and we discussed them at length. Staff was notified, as well as the various committees were also aware of the different issues regarding land usage and operational costs and other information that we were looking for. I think to kind of echo or reverberate what Mr. Osk just said, I think we did address those items and we asked that they be brought back through that process, and that still allows us at the, both at the committee level then, and then also again at the council level, it allows us the opportunity to take a look at the project in its entirety and then say, you know, go or no go, and here's why. And I think we're, I believe wholeheartedly that the various committees are addressing those items. They will be addressed, and we're anticipating those answers at the committee meeting. So my own preference would be to wait until we had a final product at the committee level and then the council table, and then if the council so decides that a project should be shelved or should be changed or whatever, that's completely the purview of the council. But I would like to give, at least give the various committees and the Invest in Wilmer Board the option to, and staff that are working on these projects, the opportunity to wrap up each of their facets, the different facets of the projects, and get those presented so that we do have all of that information. Thank you.
No comments. Rock call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
No.
Davis?
No.
Plowman?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Three ayes, five nays.
Motion fails. Next, you had a comment that you wanted to talk about the city administrator.
I did, yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, typically when the city has a job opening, they look in-house for most of the positions. And I'd like to see that first for the city administrator, to see if there's anyone on staff now that would apply for this position, and if there is, the committee could look at interviewing that person so he wouldn't or she wouldn't have to apply with this nationwide firm. And I think we have some candidates that would do this, that are currently in-house. I would prefer that first for the next few weeks to see. I don't know if there's any comments from anybody else.
So any other council members that have comments that they wish to make? What, here being suggested is that we take a two-week period of time. Are you suggesting that we would still work that process, if there was going to be an interview process that would be through Baker Tilly or that would be through a different process?
No, it'd be through our own committee, Ms. Davis's committee.
Through Labor.
Labor. And if it doesn't work out with the local people, then we continue on with the nationwide search and interviewing, so.
The council have comments about that. Councilmember Nelson.
Just seeking clarification, we did sign the agreement, are we not in the, already in the, in the search process through? So wouldn't, what are, how would this work if we were to suggest this?
Mr. Grammets, and I've got a request that you hold the mic closer to your mouth or take your mask off, they're not able to hear you.
That really doesn't mean, that doesn't mean you're going to hear me any clearer. Yeah, I probably, this is louder, I can even hear it. Yeah, I mean, we've already got a contract signed, so, you know, we're under contract with Baker Tilly. If this, you know, literally, if this was the option that was being proposed, we should have done the two weeks before we entered into the contract with the professional search firm. But, you know, the advertisements have gone out, I've had people call me on them already and ask about the city of Wilmer. I approved the local advertisement that was going into the local newspaper, and anybody who wants to apply inside or outside the city locally has the ability to apply, and we're not stopping anybody, but we've already, you know, we've already entered into a contract. So again, we, I don't know, it's whatever you want to do. But, you know, we currently have a contract to proceed with the recruitment process, so the answer is yes, Councilmember Nelson.
That contract is for $5,000, isn't that, that's what they were going to charge us?
Yes. Yeah.
So you're not saying break the contract, you're saying?
I'm not saying break the contract, if we have to, we would pay them the $5,000 if we find a candidate in-house. This is just in-house, so it's not community. Is that a motion? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Was there a made and second, Councilmember Butterfield?
I was just going to bring up the same thing. If we look through it in-house, we fill it in-house, we sew on a contract and pay Baker Tilly, you know, the contract, it's a low amount, it's not going to be, you know, the normal 10, 15, 20% of the salary. You know, the best thing to do is promote within. You know, if we have somebody here local, you know, we can find it and we think they're going to do a good job, you know, let's keep it local. I tried pitching this, you know, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, you know, and let's move forward with this. And I've even been pitching for other positions, get local staffing companies involved, that's what they professionally do, and we have a HR person right now that can, you know, start the process, you know, and reach out to our local communities, see who's all interested.
Councilmember Osmus.
I say we continue on with our process with Baker Tilly. If we have somebody who's qualified in-house, they are part of the process, and they can apply and go through that process. This is a big position, and I think we need to open it up to a good qualified candidate pool to make a good decision.
Councilmember Davis, followed by Councilmember Nelson.
I was just going to say the very same thing that Councilmember Osmus just said.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Councilmember Osk.
I would agree with that, and I'm really concerned about a message that we're sending. Having gone through the search before, candidates were respected, if local candidates are there, they will bring them to us. We were able to look at some, and the requirements are that those people remain confidential unless they're the last candidates that have to be open to the public. So I think we need to be looking for the best candidate we can, and if there is someone internally that wants to apply, they can go through the same process. And so I'm really concerned about the mixed messages that this would feel like to candidates. We need the best candidate that we can find and someone that we can, that wants to be here for the long haul. If that's a local person, great. But I'm just concerned with why we keep trying to change the process that we've already agreed to.
Councilmember Osk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's going to sound like a broken record, I think, but I believe the process is important. I'm sure that we do have great candidates locally, I'm sure that we have great candidates that are existing city employees, and I hope they all apply, and I hope they all go through the process with Baker Tilly. I think competition is good and healthy for us, and I'm not sure why, why any of them wouldn't want to go through the process, a process that is proven to ensure that we get the best candidate for the city.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That brings up a good point, thank you, Councilmember Osk. Are there, first of all, is there a motion on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
One was made and seconded.
Made by Councilmember Fagerly.
Made by Councilmember Fagerly, seconded by Councilmember Butterfield.
Okay, just to get, just to get some more of the issue out on the table, are there, do you believe that there's, that there's aspects to the process that we keep talking about, right? Are there aspects to that process that are going to, that are going to discourage local individuals or individuals that are within the organization? Is that, is that the concern, that that process itself will discourage them from doing that? And if so, like specifically, what could they be? Or is there anything that we could change about that in working with Baker Tilly to maybe make more accommodative? Is that, I don't even know if that's a word, but I use it right now, so.
It is now.
There we go.
What is a concern to someone that wants to apply, that's already working for the city, so.
And so then my follow-up question would be to, maybe probably best posed to our city administrator, is there a way, is there a way to conform with the current process while possibly allowing or making adjustments? I guess we'd have to know specifically, we'd have to know specifically what, you know, what parts of that process are not liked or not amenable, and would Baker Tilly then be willing to facilitate in that realm? In other words, could we, could we make a hybrid of our process? Is it possible?
I think Baker Tilly would allow for any modifications that we thought that we wanted in the process. You know, the Baker Tilly process is much like many of the hand-under processes, at least for city administrator and managers, and that is that they got to do a video, they answer questions, they send it in, it's reviewed, and I personally don't like the videos, you know, that's, but that's the process almost every one of the major search firms uses. So, you know, there's probably a process that Baker, or part of the process that people don't like. There's also a psychological evaluation, you know, a quickie that you usually end up doing where you fill out 20 questions, and how you answered it kind of indicates what your personality is. A lot of people don't like that, that process. And I'm sure competition, you know, you know, maybe, maybe some people have a high school diploma and would like this job, and some people have a two-year degree, and some people have a four-year degree, and some people have masters. And if you happen to want the job and you have a high school diploma, you probably aren't going to like the process because the requirements for the position are four-year degree with masters preferred. So it just depends on what you want to set as your criteria. They actually already have been set because you adopted the advertisement, which listed all of the minimum requirements to even be considered for the job. That was in that document, and every applicant that gets reviewed will be reviewed against those minimum floors, you know. You probably aren't going to, you know, be considered with a high school degree only because our minimum floor is, you know, four-year degree. So those are some of the things, if you want to reduce the requirements, you can do that, but I'm just going to let you know that the advertisement went out, you approved the brochure that listed all of those things, and that's what Baker Tilly is using as a measurement device to filter through the applicants that meet the minimum requirements and those that do not. And that's really the first step. And, but it's open to anybody in Wilmer or Cano High County, or employee or not employee, if you meet those requirements, by all means, send in your application.
Councilmember Osmus.
We are not going to go back to Baker Tilly and ask them to modify the qualification process and how this process works. They would look at us like we're crazy. There's a process, ask, when Chief Felton and I had to go through for the captain's test, for the chief's test, did we want to go down to the cities to go through all of that psychological and in-basket testing? Was that fun? No. But it's the process. And so just because somebody wants to apply and they maybe don't like part of the process, we're not going to, that doesn't, we don't change the process for that reason. If they want to apply, they apply, and it's a psychological, it's a video, it isn't anything that's, that's against anybody's morals or standards or anything that they wouldn't want to do. You go through the process. Call the vote.
Sorry, what did you say last? Councilmember Osmus, I didn't hear what you said at the end.
Call the vote.
Motion to call a question. Else for lack of a second. We have a member of the community that came and presented to us tonight and said, this is what I'm hearing from the business community. So, you know, I mean, that's something else that, you know, I mean, I brought a lot of this stuff up when we're going through the process. You know, Councilmember Butterfield brought a lot of this stuff up when we were going through the process. And with that being said, I agree with process, but, you know, I think this is a healthy conversation to have. I like the conversation rather than just a motion's made, seconded, passed. I think the conversation is good. It's up to you as the counselors to decide which direction are we going to go here. And, you know, I didn't realize that a member of the public was going to come this evening and speak to this issue, but I will tell you, as I told you before when we were talking about starting this process, I have received more phone calls from the community on this particular hire than all of the other hires combined, that it has to be local. And I mean, that is coming from elected, unelected, influential, it's coming from every angle this time around. And so you as a council need to make that determination this evening, how you choose to vote on that. So I will make that comment. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, what's one thing that we've heard on a regular basis from Councilmember Nelson and the mayor? Oh, people find out we're from Wilmer? No one wants to come to Wilmer to work, especially if they have to move here. If you have the person already living here in town and he wants to be here, that's something else. But as to Councilmember Osmus, an example is, how many times when there's a sheriff running for office and you have an incumbent? If the sheriff that's running, or deputy sheriff runs and loses, what usually happens to that deputy sheriff? The sheriff's got him on a list, and they usually retire or they move to a different county. That's the situation here. If one of these people does not get hired, that's currently employed by Wilmer, and a new administrator comes in, they're on the list. That's what's happened before, and that's what's going to happen again because the new administrators are going to say, oh, I got to be careful, so-and-so wants my job. So that's the impetus of this.
Councilmember Plowman, followed by Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I struggle with this because, well, I've been involved in as many of these as you have, Mr. Mayor, being that we started the same year, and it was a tumultuous year, and we've been, we've been through a few of these, and we have been- was a tumultuous year. And we've been, we've been through a few of these and we have been through that process. We've seen the process. We've seen the outcome of the process. I, I have to own the fact that as a council person, I voted for and approved the process that we are currently using. However, I will have to be honest and I will say that I have also been contacted by local business people, regional business people, people that, that have never contacted me before about anything political in the seven years that I've been doing this. They've never given me a single call or email about anything and I didn't know them to be political at all. And the message that I'm hearing is, is that message that, you know, why on earth are you looking across the country? We need somebody to champion Wilmer. And I guess I have the utmost respect for the process and I'm willing to put it out there that, that that was my vote in favor of that. However, above and beyond that, my responsibility is to the taxpayer and the constituents of the city of Wilmer. And when I'm hearing an overwhelming message from people that choose to contact me regarding the issue, it tends to change the way that I had once thought about it. And so it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing for me because I believe process and procedure is very important. That's what I voted for. But, but the constituents are saying something else. And I personally was put here by the constituents. And I have to represent what they're asking me to represent.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. What I heard Mr. Peppin say tonight, I believe, are things that can be available through the search process we've put in place. If there is a true good candidate that wants to apply and they're local, that would be amazing. But we have a responsibility to find a city administrator. We've had trouble with that. And we need to make sure that we are respecting the process. And, you know, I'm sorry, but I am really questioning if there's a slam dunk that somebody says, let's make this person a city administrator. That is not the correct way to go about this. If there's a good candidate, have them apply. If there are local candidates, bring them to the table. They will be respected. They will go through the process. We sat and looked at how many people the last time. We need to find a good candidate. We have a good search firm. We made a decision. The document is out there. People are already shopping and looking at this position. And I'm sorry, I, I just think we are not helping ourselves by arguing about, if you don't think there's anyone good enough to come from outside of Wilmer, what does that say for our community, too? We need to, we need to promote from within and not look at someone else? No. We need to find the best candidate. If that best candidate is internal, apply. If the best candidate is from Wilmer, apply. But we need to go through the process. We deserve a good city administrator. This community deserves a good city administrator. And we need to respect the process and go through it.
Councilmember Osk.
I just want to say I'm kind of concerned that the question is becoming, it seems to be becoming a question of like, do you vote for or against a local hire? And I don't think that's the question before us. You know, again, let the local candidates go through the process. In fact, the question that seems to be before us wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily elevate local candidates. It only elevates current city employees and then leaves all the other local candidates that aren't currently working for the city. They're all left out. I also just want to say personally, too, that I think you can hire great people from outside of the city. I wouldn't be here otherwise, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'll make a motion to call a question.
Second. Motion made and seconded to call a question. Question's called.
No.
O'Brien? Butterfield?
Aye.
Osk?
No.
Davis?
No.
Plowman?
Could I have the motion repeated, please, as it's currently recorded?
The motion I have is that we look in-house first and see if there's anyone interested for the position of city administrator.
For two weeks.
For a two-week period.
For two-week period.
No.
No.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Three ayes, five knees.
Motion fails. Announcement of committee, council committee meeting, Public Works Safety.
Public Works? Oh, sorry. I had a going on. Public Works, Public Safety will be meeting, as far as I know, this Thursday at 4:30.
Planets?
Planets is meeting this Thursday, March 4th at 5:45.
In Development?
No meeting.
Labor?
We will meet Tuesday, March 9th at 5:45.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. No good feelings?
No, I didn't have anything sent to me.
Okay. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. We are adjourned.